The choir to come forward. As we are going to start this evening, our service here, I would like everyone to settle down and as we are going to lift up the name of our Lord Jesus Christ this evening once again. Thank you Father, thank you Jesus. We pray for your presence. We pray for your guidance. We pray for your leading this evening. We pray that in and through everything, Lord, your name will be glorified. May the meditations of our heart, the thoughts which come through our minds, let everything be pleasing to you, Lord. We pray that, Lord, you will guide us and lead us in the right direction. So we thank you, we praise you. We give you honor and glory, Lord. Hallelujah. Let's all pray as we are in the presence of the Lord tonight. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Our most gracious and only Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you gave in our lives and one more opportunity to be together in your presence. Samus says, "Better is one day in your courts than thousands elsewhere." We pray, Lord, once again tonight, help us to experience what the disciples said. "Lord, where can we go? You have the living words which is needed for life." Lord, tonight we pray that you will lead us and guide us in every aspect, even as we sing songs, help us to glorify your name. As we hear your word and things about the wonderful things you have done in this world and how you are interacting and dealing with humans in this generation also, Lord, help us that we will be able to really comprehend what has been shared today. We pray for your servant who is with us. Thank you for using him yesterday as he is with us this evening. We pray that you will use him and guide him. From the beginning till the end, we pray that your name will be glorified. We thank you, we give you honor and glory, in Jesus' most precious name we pray. Amen, amen. Praise God. If you can stand up, please stand up as we sing some songs to praise and lift up the name of Jesus high tonight. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. We worship you, Lord. Can we take a moment to just open up our mouth and just thank the Lord? Maybe you had a hectic day, we don't know. Maybe you came into the presence of the Lord tonight with burdens in your hearts, but one thing is sure, you have come to the right place. You have come to the place where you will not only get some words of comfort, but actually our God is able to do mighty things for each and every one of us. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Sometimes we fail to rejoice in the presence of the Lord, but Apostle Paul says, "Rejoice in the Lord." Again I say rejoice, rejoice in the Lord. Tonight let's rejoice in his presence. In the midst of all the turmoil and all the things which are happening, if there is a group of people who can rejoice, it's such beautiful of God. Amen. Thank you, Jesus. So let's sing this song. And we're going to sing few songs here before we go further. So let's just thank the Lord. Amen, amen. It's bubbling, it's bubbling, it's bubbling in my soul. I'm singing, I'm dancing since Jesus made me whole. No flocks can understand it, how can I keep it quiet? It's bubbling, 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 day and night. It's bubbling, it's bubbling, it's bubbling in my soul. I'm singing, I'm dancing since Jesus made me whole. No flocks can understand it, how can I keep it quiet? It's bubbling, 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 day and night. It's bubbling, it's bubbling, it's bubbling in my soul. I'm singing, I'm dancing since Jesus made me whole. No flocks can understand it, how can I keep it quiet? It's bubbling, 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 day and night. Once again, it's bubbling, it's bubbling, it's bubbling. (Singing in Hindi) No flocks can understand it, how can I keep it quiet? It's bubbling, 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 day and night. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Can we give a clap offering unto our Lord Jesus this evening? Hallelujah. We give you all the glory and honor, Lord. Hallelujah. We worship you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Father. We praise you. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Our Lord has said, love towards God should not be at the peripherals. It should not be in a level where everything else gets priority, but it should be at a level where we give our hearts and mind and everything to Jesus. Can we give thanks to the Lord and say, "God, I give everything to you"? This is my desire to honor you. Lord, with all my heart, I worship you. All I have within me, I give you praise. All that I adore is in you. Lord, I give you my heart and I give you my soul. I live for you alone. Every breath that I take, every moment I'm awake. Lord, have your way in me. Lord, I give you my heart and I give you my soul. I live for you alone. Every breath that I take, every moment I'm awake. Lord, have your way in me. This is my desire to honor you. Lord, with all my heart, I worship you. And all I have within me, I give you praise. All that I adore is in you. Oh Lord, I give you my heart and I give you my soul. I live for you alone. Every breath that I take, every moment I'm awake. Lord, have your way in me. Lord, I give you my heart and I give you my soul. I live for you alone. Every breath that I take, every moment I'm awake. Lord, have your way in me. Thank you, Jesus. We worship you, Jesus. We thank you, Lord. Hallelujah. That's our desire, Lord, that we want to give you everything we can offer. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. I dare not trust the sweetest prayer, but wholly trust in Jesus' name. I hope is built on nothing less than Jesus' blood and righteousness. I dare not trust the sweetest prayer, but wholly trust in Jesus' name. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong, in the Savior's love and through the storm, He is Lord, Lord of all. When darkness seems to hide His face, I rest on His unchanging grace. In every high and stormy gale, my anchor holds within the land. My anchor holds within the land. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong, in the Savior's love and through the storm, He is Lord, Lord of all. When He shall come with trumpet sound, oh may I dare and He be found, dressed in His flesh and blessed alone, faultlessness turned before the throne. Christ alone, cornerstone, weak made strong, in the Savior's love and through the storm, He is Lord, Lord of all. Jesus paid it all, all to Him I owe. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. I hear the Savior say, thy strength indeed is small, child of weakness, watch and pray. Find in me thine all and all. Jesus paid it all, all to Him I owe. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. For nothing good and why whereby thy grace to claim, I washed my garments white in the blood of Calvary's lamb. Jesus paid it all, all to Him I owe. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. And now completed in Him, my robe and righteousness close sheltered need this side. I am Him divinely blessed. Jesus paid it all, all to Him I owe. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. Lord, now indeed I find thy power and thy alone and changed the leper's form and now the heart of stone. Jesus paid it all, all to Him I owe. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. Jesus paid it all, all to Him I owe. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. Sin I left a crimson stain, He washed it white as snow. We worship you, Lord. We praise you. Hallelujah. Oh, we join with the hosts of angels to sing hallelujah to unto your name, Lord. Us, cheraphims are day and night praising you. Oh, the angels are singing glory to you. We join together and sing hallelujah to your name, oh Lord. Hallelujah. Oh, we worship you, Jesus. We worship you, Jesus. (Singing in Hindi) Can we sing it without any instruments? I want the congregation to sing it aloud. We worship you, Jesus. This time just the congregation, no choir. Ah ha ha ha. Amen, Jesus. We worship you, Lord Jesus. Hallelujah. (Singing in Hindi) Let's all sing together with the music. Oh, we worship you, Jesus. We give you honor and glory. Hallelujah. We praise you, Jesus. We give you glory. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Can we all, hallelujah, give him the glory and praises this evening? Hallelujah. Hallelujah, we were singing. He is going to come back. Hallelujah. Take along with him his beloveds. Hallelujah. We are his children. Hallelujah. Bible says, "For us many of them received him; he gave them the right to become the children of God; for God so loved the world, that he gave his only begotten son; that who believes in him shall not perish, but have everlasting life." Hallelujah. Many times we think we are the only ones who sing, but Bible tells us that there are heavenly hosts, heavenly angels singing all the time. Praises and glory unto the Lord. Amen. Hallelujah. But still it gives great joy and pleasure to God when his creation, the ones who created in his own image, when they reach out and they praise and give him glory. Hallelujah. This evening, hallelujah. Can we, hallelujah, say to the Lord, "We thank you for everything you have done." Hallelujah. Thank you for seeing me, Lord. Thank you for, hallelujah, helping me to know you, Lord. Hallelujah. It's a great thing to praise the Lord. It's a great thing to know him. Hallelujah. And it's a great thing to serve him. What a mighty God we serve. Hallelujah. Can we all give him a clap offering? Hallelujah. We worship you, Jesus. We thank you, Jesus. Gracious and only Father, we pray that you will continue to lead and guide us this evening. Lord, we worship you, we praise you. We look forward to that day when people from every nation, every tongue, every tribe, they all will be gathered together and they will all sing the song of praise unto their God and they will all sing your praises. Lord, we thank you because you died for everyone. You did not die for a particular group of people or a people who speak a particular language, but Lord, when anyone cries out to you from the ends of the world, you listen to them. We thank you. Lord, many of us were born in different places, different, in places where they speak different languages, but what has brought us together is your precious blood which was shed on the cross for us. Oh Lord, thank you for dying for us and making the way possible so that we will be saved. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus, for that great thing you have done. We will always be thankful to you and we thank you, Lord, this evening. We pray for Pastor Billy Anger as he brings your counsel tonight in this congregation. We pray that you will bless us. Also pray for people who are watching us online. Maybe now or maybe later, I pray that, Lord, you will continue to minister to everyone who is listening to this service or watching this service or attending this service. We give you praise, we give you honor and glory, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen, amen. You all may be seated, please. Amen. I give you, I give all the praises to God. Amen. I want to greet you all in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. It's a privilege to be in the presence of the Lord. I remind normally during the Saturday meetings often that as we are here tonight, we have to remember in the eastern part of the world, many people are getting ready to gather for their Sunday service and there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people who cannot gather simply because they don't have the permission. They don't have, because if they gather, either the government will come and stop them or some people will come and make it difficult for them. And some places, a church which used to gather, they are they are gathering like two, three families, two, three families, because they can't gather. In many places, when they gather, if there is a visitor, pastor, the people are afraid whether, what is going to happen? Are they from some place and are they going to trap us? Are they going to? And in some places, they are just, they are not sure whether police will come and arrest them or not. All these circumstances are prevailing in many places. But tonight, God has given us the freedom to gather together and lift up his name. How many of you are happy about that? Amen? Praise God. I remind those things and a lot of times we take for granted that we have a Bible. But a lot of times, we have multiple translations and all those things. But there are still people in the world who don't have a Bible. And then there are many people who may have a Bible in their language, but they cannot read it. But what a privilege it is that God has given us. We have the Bible. We can read the Bible. And we can learn about the Bible. And we can praise God. Amen? Thank, I don't want to thank God without taking any more time. I hope everybody is settled now. I want to invite Pastor Billy Anger. Yesterday, I gave an introduction about him, so today, no introduction. He is going to come and straight away take us through what the Lord has put in his heart to share with us. Over to you, Pastor.
Thank you again, Pastor, for the privilege of being able to speak to this wonderful body of believers here in Minneapolis-St. Paul, Greater Minneapolis-St. Paul. And I just count this a privilege and an honor. And I had a moment for just a few, just shared a few moments with some of you before service tonight. I had a chance to meet you. And it's been a privilege having had this opportunity for these past few hours. As I mentioned last night, the very first time I met with the ICPF group in Arlington, Texas, I offered to answer questions for the young adults that may have had something on their mind that as far as curiosity is concerned, was never satisfied with an answer. And so I told them, I said, guys, if you have any questions, I gave them my email address and I said, simply drop me an email line. And dozens and dozens of questions came in. And so without any provocation, without any planning, I found myself sending out a monthly digital magazine. And if you have any questions whatsoever about the Christian faith, about the Bible, about the exclusive claims that Jesus made, just feel free to write me. That is part of my ministry. And every month, I send out through the email this digital magazine. It is simply called AMP. For those that don't recognize, AMP is an acronym and it stands for Apologetic Ministry Preparing Educated Disciples. And that is my agenda. I want to equip young adults with the spiritual weaponry necessary for standing in defense of the Christian worldview, whether on the job or in the classroom. And so if you would like to receive a copy of this in your email every month, all you've got to do is give me your information on this card. There is no charge, no obligation. My agenda is very simply answering the questions that people have about their faith and also about other religious belief systems. And so just see me after, as a matter of fact, is it okay if I just put them over here? And if you'd like to receive that in the mail every month, just give me your information and we'll start sending it your direction right away. In the second service tomorrow, I will actually be speaking from the Bible. What a novel idea. And I traveled for 13 or 14 years preaching revival meetings. And I told Pastor today, as we were taping his podcast, that for the first several years of my evangelistic ministry, my wife and I raised our three children in a 37-foot travel trailer. It at least had two slide outs. And so for two plus years, that was our only home. Day and night, 12 months a year, we lived in that 37-foot wilderness travel trailer zigzagging all around the United States. We celebrated Christmas in that travel trailer and Thanksgiving. And I look back on those days, even though they were tougher on my wife than they were on me, it was still a good time. And I believe that my children received an invaluable education. They saw more of the United States in those two years than most American citizens will see in their entire lifetime. And you can never go wrong sacrificing what you have to the cause of Christ. I believe in an ROI, a return on investment. And the greatest return that you will ever receive is that which you have sown into the work of Christ because he pays back with eternal dividends. Somebody say amen to that if you don't mind, please. All right, I appreciate that. Extraordinary claims require extraordinary answers and exceptional evidence. Let me say it one more time. Extraordinary claims require extraordinary evidence. That is the phrase or the statement that secularists use constantly in their argument against Christianity. Now, tonight, in the course of our time together, slide number four, please. I am going to mention secularists, naturalists, and also atheists. Slide number, is that slide number four? Slide number five? All right, now I'm way off. And all of these fall under the umbrella of atheism, the disbelief in God. Secularists see society as governing all things and matters pertaining to life. There is no place for religion. Naturalists see the sovereignty of nature as the only relevance for life and living. And again, these are all atheistic in their foundational viewpoints. Now, what I discover is that secularists, naturalists, and atheists oftentimes trap themselves in the statement that extraordinary claims require extraordinary evidence. They use that statement to mock the Christian worldview, to discourage those of us that believe in the inerrancy of the Bible and the supremacy of Christ and the exceptionalism of Christ from pursuing our faith further. Somebody one time said that evidence, now listen to this, please, evidence that somebody won the lottery. Now, I don't play the lottery. I can't think of a bigger waste of money. But when the multi-million jackpot, what's it called, multiple, I don't know, Powerball or something like that, reached $2 billion in one particular drawing and $1.5 billion in another drawing, I got a phone call from my unspiritual wife. And she said, on the way home, make sure you buy some lottery tickets. I said, I can't think of a bigger waste of money. She said, well, somebody has to win. I said, yeah, but it's not going to be us. Furthermore, I believe that if I won the lottery, it would absolutely ruin my life because it would present to me the ability to fulfill temptations and stray from the path of righteousness that I would not have if I simply lived within the financial parameters that God has established for my life. So when somebody wins the lottery, understand that the evidence is not extraordinarily different from the winning lottery ticket and the proof of the losing lottery ticket. It is all a matter of interpreting the dissimilarities. And that is what Christianity and atheism does juxtapose to atheism. So I look at these lottery tickets and I ask myself the question, what is the best explanation for the data? You see, evolutionists, slide number six now, please. I think it's slide number six. There we go. Evolutionists assume extraordinary events without ever providing for us a shred of evidence. And so for a few moments tonight, I want to deal with this subject. Questions that atheism cannot answer. Requiem Christians are arbitrarily dismissed by the naturalists and by the secularists as being unable to give a concrete answer for our worldview, for our theistic belief system. But I begin tonight by asking this question. How did the idea, how did the concept of a conscious being arise from an unconscious object? Let me say it another way. You and I tonight are all mindful creatures. We have an awareness of our surroundings. We are responsive to certain stimuli. And yet we are told that somehow, some way, without explanation, we came from lifeless objects. This is a question in my mind that atheism cannot answer. As I mentioned last night, I've been doing some research regarding biogenesis. And I've been searching through the standard textbooks of academia. And it's interesting, time and again, these authors describe biogenesis as an hypothesis. That is to say, it is guesswork. There is no way that we can say for certain that biogenesis is a scientific fact. And biogenesis is simply this. All living things come from pre-existing living things. Say it one more time. All living things come from pre-existing living things. And so far as I know, science has never offered us one shred of evidence to the contrary. Life produces life. We would all have to agree as much. But now, our kids being indoctrinated in the public school system are being taught something called abiogenesis. And strangely enough, it is not referred to as a theory. Now, abiogenesis is different from spontaneous generation. And I won't take time to explain the difference tonight. We know that Louis Pasteur completely refuted spontaneous generation. Ironically enough, the very same year that Darwin came out with his book, The Origin of Species. But when our kids walk into the classroom, they are taught that some 3.5 billion years ago, life came from non-life. Animation came from that which is inanimate. And I believe in large part, these teachings, this teaching of abiogenesis was the result of Darwin's 1859 publication, The Origin of Species. And if you study Darwin's writing, The Origin of Species, you quickly learn that it doesn't speak about the origin of life, only the evolution of a species because Darwin presupposed the existence of life. He gave himself the latitude of that scholastic leap by just assuming life existed. But he never answered the question of how life originated. Our planet is filled with plants and animals. Some scientists estimate that there are some 8.7 million species of animals. 8.7 million species of animals on this planet with another 320,000 species of plant life. I asked the question, plants and animals populate the earth. But there was a time that plants and animals were nonexistent. And when you evaluate the contingency argument, you must ask yourself the question, why is there something rather than nothing? Because if something has the potential of not existing, we must ask ourselves why it then does in fact exist. Give me slide number 10 if you don't mind, please. And notice this, before we move on, notice it said, biogenesis is based on the theory that life can only come from life. The theory that life can only come from life. If you don't mind, please, slide number 10. And so the evolutionists, go back to slide number nine. We're all out of whack here. Is that slide number nine? Fantastic. You gave away my punchline coming up here. Evolutionists in the 1920s were absolutely just flat when it came to giving an explanation regarding the origin of life. And so there are two evolutionists, Alexander Operon, he was a Russian. And then you had a British geneticist by the name of John Haldane that introduced the idea of primordial soup. Now, you may have heard that phrase, primordial soup, and thought it was simply some arbitrary or dismissive term that Christian Jews went talking with evolutionists. The word primordial means the beginning of something. And primordial soup was very simply these two men teaching that the oceans of the world were these enormous cooking pots filled with all kinds of chemicals. And the chemicals were then acted upon by an outward or outside energy force. And they conjecture that it was either meteorite showers, ultraviolet light, or lightning storms that moved, now listen, that moved upon these chemicals, now this is the catcher, allowing for the self-assembly of living cells. I want to say that one more time. Allowing for the self-assembly of living cells. Never mind, they never answered the question where these seas came from. They never answered the question where the planet came from. They never answered the question where the chemicals came from. They never answered the question about the imbalance between the storm clouds and the surface of the earth causing the execution of this electricity in the form of lightning. They never answer those questions. They just presume. I've learned some things in my life. Nothing dead comes back to life. I received a phone call just a few days ago. And on the other, on the other end of the phone line, somebody said to me, Billy, and they gave me the name, so-and-so passed away. She had been a member when I passed her to church years ago in Fort Worth. There's one thing I know about Anita's death. Anita is not coming back to life. I know of nothing in this world dead that has ever come back to life. With the exception of, come on now, guys, you can shout at least a little bit over that. Jesus Christ or those that came into contact with him. It reminds me of a story, and I don't like getting off script. But it reminds me of a story that one time there was a revival meeting taking place. And God was really moving in that revival meeting. And people began to just shout with exuberance. They ran up and down the aisles. They were clapping their hands and they were jumping for joy. And a lady in the church came up to the pastor afterward and she said, Pastor, I want you to know something. I find all of this exuberance offensive. After all, we are Christians and as Christians, we are to imitate Christ. And not one time in the Bible do you find Christ leaping, jumping, shouting, clapping, or running. And the wise old pastor paused for a moment. And he said, sister, you are right. Jesus never ran. He never clapped. He never shouted. He never danced. But everybody he touched, dead. I love that because that's what Jesus does for us. But from this massive cooking pot, these chemicals began to self-assemble into living cells. Nothing dead returns back to life. And if you believe that electricity moving on an inanimate object can bring that object to life, then give me the next slide, slide number 10. You are following after a little tale of fiction written by a British girl, 20 years of age, published in 1888, the book called Frankenstein. Evolution, nothing working on nothing, by nothing, with nothing, through nothing, begat absolutely everything. These are questions that science and evolution cannot answer. It's like the guy once said, when I was in kindergarten, they told me that a frog, how did he say that? The frog was kissed by, oh, what's the story? The frog became a prince. They told me in kindergarten, the frog became a prince. And they called that story a fairy tale. But when I got to junior high, when the story was told that a frog became a prince, they called it science. It shows you I don't know my fairy tales. It shows you I don't know my fairy tales very well tonight. Slide number 11, before evolution can ever begin, there must be a cell. Interestingly enough, molecular biology tells us that the simplest living system, that being a bacteria cell, is exceedingly complicated, more complicated than any human machinery, a bacterial cell. Furthermore, science with all of its prowess, with all of its education, with all of its arrogance, has boasted decades earlier that at this point in time, they would have been able to create a cell in their laboratory. Science has never been able to create a cell. Furthermore, science has never been able to disassemble, or disassemble the cell, and then reconstruct the cell successfully, allowing it functionality. Now, now listen to that. They take all the parts of a cell, they disassemble the cell, they put the cell back together, but the cell has no functionality. In other words, it's not living any longer, and there's a reason for that. The cell must have an informational code. Every cell has something in its nucleus called DNA. You and I are made of 30 trillion cells. Do you realize that in just one cell, we have six and a half feet of DNA? In other words, if all the DNA in our bodies was spread out, it would cover the entire diameter of the universe. I think of David's words when he says, I am fearfully and wonderfully made. If you want to know why it is, a reassembled cell cannot function after it's put back together in a laboratory, it's simply because this is a piece of technology. But this is a piece of technology that is completely and totally worthless if it doesn't have the software. It can have all the componentry, the metal and the plastic and everything necessary physically for its function, but if it doesn't have a programmer putting a program into the machine, it will never function and be nothing more than a useless piece of garbage. When God reached down thousands of years ago into red dirt and formed something called Adam, the first man, and breathed into Adam's nostrils the breath of life God gave to mankind, divine programming. Programming that allows us the awareness that there is a God, and this God is to be worshiped in spirit and in truth. Somebody programs the computer. And yet we are forced to believe that something can come from nothing spontaneously programming itself. That is the basis of evolution. And so what happened was, with the gathering of all kinds of information, science was forced to tweak its definition of nothing. Because at one time, science said there was nothing, but from nothing, all things came about. And so slide number 12, if you don't mind, please. This guy by the name of Lawrence Krauss wrote a seminal book back in 2013 entitled A Universe from Nothing. And in the process of his book, he, now this is interesting, he redefined the definition of nothing by presupposing quantum mechanics. And in his book, he wrote, nothing has weight. Now, now just ponder that for a moment. You can weigh nothing. That is like me standing in front of you tonight, saying, when I came into the church, nothing gave me directions to the sanctuary. That is like me standing in front of you tonight and saying, nothing tastes good if you add salt and pepper to it. Nothing has weight. And we atheists are constantly accused of making assumptions. And the questions that atheism addresses, atheism avoids because they cannot answer with any kind of integrity. Atheism assumes randomness, that all things have come about through a matter of chance, albeit fortuitous circumstances. So I want to go back to that premise. There are questions that atheism cannot answer. I want to know how particles unintentionally assembled? How objects without intention produce intentional beings? Because we are all intentional beings. How does a purposeless planet find itself with human beings who live a life of purpose? Is morality, intelligence, and reason simply the product of random chemical processes? Evolution cannot answer these questions. Questions that atheism cannot answer. Let's begin at number 13, please. Slide number 13, I promise I won't keep you long tonight, and everybody believes that, right? I've got a clock and I'm watching the clock. Smile at me. Atheism teaches, this is absolutely fundamental, part and parcel to our talk tonight, atheism teaches, there's nothing but the physical world, nothing but the physical world, and the physical realm is constantly changing. The change is characterized by random and unguided processes. Logic though tells us, there is an immaterial world. There is a non-physical world that is unchanging, because I believe logic is an expression of God's person. Evolution says, it's only physical, and it's constantly changing. But logic says there are non-physical truths that are unchanging. Very simply, let me ask you this question. How can a person in Sweden, evolving in their own unique way, and a person in Japan, evolving in their own unique way, responding to the chemical reactions in their body, as one a Swede and the other as a Japanese? How can both of these people that have never laid eyes on each other, have never been on each other's continent, how can they arrive at the same law of non-contradiction? Non-contradiction, A cannot be not A. It cannot be raining and not raining at the same time and in the same instance, or in the same manner. How's that possible? If all things are only physical? Truth. Give me the next slide, if you don't mind, please. Truth. Give me the next slide, please. Truth, there we go. Naturalism says that all things evolved for the sake of survival. After all, isn't that what Darwin said? Survival of the fittest? I want to give you a quote tonight from a Canadian philosopher by the name of Patricia Churchland. And this is what she said. It boils down to the essentials. A nervous system enables the organism to succeed by feeding, flighting, fighting, and reproducing. The principal chore of the nervous system is not to get the body parts where they should be in order that the organism may survive. Truth, whatever that is, definitely takes a backseat. And as I mentioned last night, this within itself is a self-refuting statement, because she's making a truth claim that truth takes a backseat. And you find that philosophically in the arguments of the evolutionist and the atheist. She makes this truth claim. In other words, she is saying, the only thing that really matters is your physical drive for survival. Again, I quoted C.S. Lewis last night, and so let me quote C.S. Lewis again tonight, because he brilliantly addressed this fallacy. Reasoning that you and I are more than just a chemical function. This is what he said. Slide number 16, please. Supposing there was no intelligence behind the universe, no creative mind, in that case, nobody designed my brain for the purpose of thinking. It is merely that when the atoms inside my skull happen for physical or chemical reasons to arrange themselves in a certain way, this gives me as a byproduct, a sensation that I call thought. But if so, how can I trust my own thinking to be true? It's like upsetting a milk jug and hoping that the way it splashes itself will give you a map of London. But if you cannot trust, if I cannot trust my own thinking, of course, I cannot trust the arguments leading to atheism. And therefore, I have no reason to be an atheist or anything else. Unless I believe in God, I cannot believe in thought. So I can never use thought to disbelieve in God. Questions that atheism cannot answer. In essence, he is saying, the belief that there is no God is the product of thought, and thought comes from a source beyond and above mere physical and chemical reactions. If evolution is true, everything, including thought, the thought that produced the belief there is no God solely happened by chance. I want to say that one more time. If evolution is true, every thought that you've ever had, including I don't believe there is a God, happened randomly and by chance. Questions that atheism cannot answer. Einstein published his theory of general relativity in 1915, and special relativity in 1905. Give me slide number 7, if you don't mind, please. Albert Einstein, the little, the little German born to secularized Jews. Slide number 18, please. And he published his two works in 1905, Special and General Relativity, 1915. And this is the interesting thing. When Einstein gave us this publication, basically showing us the relationship between space-time and matter, he used mathematics to do so. Here's the interesting thing. Evolution once again says, all that exists is physical. But you and I both know that mathematics is non-physical and also abstract. It's not that Albert Einstein invented the math to explain his theory of relativity. He simply discovered the math that had been there all along. Where did that math come from if it did not come from a transcendent being? The math was there all the while. Then in slide number 19, you've got this prominent, back there, please, back there. Yeah, thanks. Astronomer physicist by the name of Arthur Eddington, an extremely prominent astrophysicist in his time. And so he organized an expedition to the country, the South American country of Brazil, for the purpose of testing Einstein's theory. And so during a solar eclipse, he discovered that light behind, light from a star behind the sun actually bent around the sun, and that Einstein's theory was in fact true. Now it's interesting, when he came back and he gave his findings to the scientific world, the scientific world really put paper to pencil. And ultimately, it required decades of research to validate the math that Einstein's theories were in fact correct. But once again, let me say, they did so using something non-physical, they used math. Where did the math come from if it did not come from God? Because mathematical entities, whether they be numbers, equations, or sets, are non-physical, they are abstract. You understand the material world that we live in operates mathematically. There's not a mathematician on the face of the planet that's going to stand up and tell you that this world is not operating with mathematical precision. Science relies on these assumptions to do its work. That's the irony. It was Galileo that said, the Book of Nature is written in the language of mathematics. It was Isaac Newton observing mathematical principles and understanding how they work that gave us the discovery of gravity. Slide number 21, if you don't mind, please. And through these simple mathematical expressions, we ultimately, as human beings, made the discovery of flight. And so each and every week, I'm on an airplane, and I hear things like lift, and drag, and crosswind, and thrust. All of these things are understood mathematically. Lift, you've got to know trigonometry in order to understand lift. Math doesn't create these things, but math does explain them. And understanding the math allows us these freedoms that we enjoy today. Another guy, James Clerk Maxwell, was a Scottish physicist, among the most elite scientists in the world at his time. And he used, next slide, if you don't mind, please. He used mathematics to predict the existence of radio magnetic waves. So today, when you go into the kitchen and you use the microwave, when you turn on the television, when you listen to the radio, when we enjoy electricity in our homes from transformers, X-rays when we think we've got a broken bone, when we sing through a microphone, or we slide our magnetic card readers, or we pick up our cellphone and make a call, all of this is the result of the discovery Maxwell made by tapping in to mathematical truth. Where did these mathematical truths come from if evolution is true and all things are only physical? I listened to Timothy, my man Timothy, the guitarist, the keyboardist and the guitarist. There was a guy that lived a long time ago by the name of Pythagoras. You musicians owe him a debt of gratitude. Pythagoras learned using mathematics that if you take a vibrating string and cut it directly in two, you raise that pitch exactly one octave. How did he make that discovery? He did so using mathematics. I believe that logic, I believe that math points to something other than mere naturalism. Logic, truth, and math. Now, slide number 24. This is going to come as a shock, but you actually exist. You are here. It is not an illusion, but you are a reality. I gave you Rene Descartes last night when he said, I think, therefore I am. My thinking is evidence of my reality. Why did he say this? Because he was drawing on the distinction that there is a biological difference between the mind and the brain. The mind and the brain. I wrote these notes down just a few moments before services, I was meditating on this little presentation tonight. How does inert matter begin to think? How does the brain begin to exercise its capacity for reason? If all things are merely biological and chemical? If evolution is true, how do we understand Beethoven's Fifth Symphony? If evolution is true, how do we understand the writings of William Shakespeare? If evolution is true, how do we understand the exquisite artwork of Leonardo da Vinci and his Mona Lisa? Let me read the words to you tonight of an agnostic philosopher by the name of Michael Ruse. He said this, why should a bunch of atoms have thinking ability? And why should I, even as I now write them, be able to reflect on what I am doing? There is no scientific answer. Your ability to reason, to think, to ponder, to contemplate, to evaluate, moves you from the realm of the mere physical into the world of the divine, because who you are is the ultimate expression of God saying, let us make man in our image and after our likeness. Humans can be reduced to physical properties, and the mind can be seen nothing as chemistry. And the brain and the mind are nothing but identical. And understand something, if the brain and the mind are identical, then the implications are extreme. There is ultimately no conclusion that we can draw, other than this, if the mind and the brain are identical... If the mind and the brain are identical, if your actions and your behaviors are simply the product of your physical and chemical reactions, then free will is just an illusion. And human behavior is purely the result of a physical response. And if human behavior is strictly the product of human response, how can someone be held accountable for their behavior? When they have no control over their physical body? I think that the human experience contradicts that hypothesis because we are all distinct and unique individuals. Some of you have a melancholy personality. Others have a phlegmatic, a sanguine, a caloric personality. Some of you are methodical, some of you are bossy, some of you are organizers, some of you are compassionate. My mother is bossy. So I made the purposeful and willful decision when I grew up not to be bossy because it drove me crazy. What gave me the ability to make that decision? If I am nothing but chemical and physical processes? There is no evolutionary mechanism that explains human consciousness. It's impossible to create consciousness in a laboratory, in a mathematical equation. And listen to me, please. Ultimately, if our behavior is determined chemically, the outcome is inevitable. And therefore morality doesn't really exist. It's just an illusion. How can you hold someone morally accountable for their behavior? If their behavior is simply a reaction to their biological processes? You know, that's, that's pretty much what Darwin taught in his Origin of Species. The strong survive. If evolution is true, then what's the, what's the difference between a sea lion killing a seal, a shark killing a seal rather, or a human killing another human? Just stop and contemplate this with me for a moment. Three or four years ago, right before COVID, I guess it was, I was, I was invited to go to a boxing match in Fort Worth. And I met a man, he was probably in his mid eighties, who had just been released from prison. He had been placed in the, in the state prison. I think he was there for 40 or 50 years. And the reason he was there is because one particular afternoon, he came home. His wife did not know he was coming home and he found his wife engaged in inappropriate behavior with another man. And so this man went into his dresser, pulled out his gun and shot both the wife and her boyfriend dead on the spot, put the gun down, picked up the phone, called the police, told them what he did, sat on the front porch and said, you can come and pick me up. If it is nothing but the strongest survive, if that's all life is, how can we say, pronouncing a moral judgment on her, that what she did was wrong? If in fact, she was simply trying to survive? Where does morality come from if we're merely biological creatures? Slide number 27. You guys have heard about this, the Me Too movement, all the result of a Hollywood executive by the name of Harvey Weinstein. If evolution is true, all we can, all he needs to do is, is argue that he evolved differently than everybody else. I, I, I didn't put a slide up here, but let me give you a name. A woman by the name of Margaret Sanger, you may not be familiar with that name, hated black people, despised them with a passion. And so she established throughout the major cities of the country, a eugenics practice for eliminating the African-American culture. She called it the Negro Project. Today, it's better known as Planned Parenthood. And Planned Parenthood was established for the purpose of eliminating African-Americans from the American, to exterminate all African-Americans. Because in her mind, the black man had no value. But in her mind, the white person was of extreme value. I contend that if there is no God, her opinion is subjective, just as is your opinion. Therefore, if there's no God, who is to say what is right and who is to say what is wrong? Morality must be based on a transcendent reality. And that transcendence is found only in the person of God Almighty. Why is it wrong? I'm not going to go through the basic schools of thought that were given today. Natural law, contractualism, consequentialism. I touched on utilitarianism last night. But let me say this as I try to close out this little teaching tonight. Anytime you say something is wrong, you have just assigned value to that thing or that person. Let me say that one more time. Anytime you make a moral pronouncement, something is right or something is wrong, you have just assigned value to that thing. And the all telling question is this. Where does that value come from? In American culture, value comes in money. It comes in power, it comes in prestige, it comes in position. But I believe that value transcends all those things. Every man has an inherent value that comes from his creator. But if there is no creator, then value is arbitrarily assigned through individual opinion. What I gave you tonight is really not a matter of evidence. Those of us that believe in God are looking at the same evidence as those that do not believe in God. Instead, it's a matter of one's worldview and the lens through which they interpret this information. I believe every person in this room tonight, everyone that's watching on the internet has value of eternal significance. Values not found in the money they have, the home they live in, the car they drive, or the clothes that they wear. A person's value is found in the fact that God Almighty reached down 6,000 plus years ago and made humankind in his image, giving mankind the capacity to worship and the opportunity for relationship. But that privilege was forfeited. Adam deliberately and willfully chose to turn his back on the simple eating that God gave him. Don't eat from that particular tree. And the consequence for his willful disobedience was eternal death. For the age of sin is death. And all have sinned, falling short of the glory of God. Mankind, God's choice creation, has now lost his position and his place of relationship with the very one that created him. But God's value placed on you did not change because we willfully turned our backs on him. But instead, the Bible tells me in St. John 3 and 16, that God so loved me and you that he gave his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him will not perish, but have everlasting life. How do I understand there is a God? Yes, I understand him mathematically. I understand him through logic. I understand him through justice. I understand him through consciousness. I understand him in those ways, but I can only know him through the physical expression of his love in the person of Jesus Christ. For the apostle Paul said in Romans, chapter five and verse eight, that while you and I were yet sinners, Christ died for us. And tonight, the information that we've gleaned intellectually can, can become a spiritual reality in and through what Jesus did for us on the cross. How do I know you have value? Your value is assigned, your value is understood in the sacrifice God gave for your salvation. You're so valuable, God gave his best when he gave his son. And that's an answer I promise evolution can never offer. Father, I thank you tonight and I praise you tonight. I honor you tonight. You're a good, good God. Thank you, Jesus. Where's my keyboardist? There he is. Where's my guitarist? Lord, I thank you. Thank you, thank you. For everything you've done in our lives, all that you have given us because of grace, because of kindness, because of mercy. Jesus paid it all. What was that chord that you were playing that song in? What key are you in? That's D? Oh, I can hear the Savior say, thy strength indeed is small. Child of weakness, watch and pray. Finding me, you're all in all. Jesus paid it all and all to him I owe. Sin had left a crimson stain. He washed it white as snow. Come on, sing it with me now. Jesus paid it all and all to him I owe. Sin had left a crimson stain. He washed it white as snow. Lord, I thank you tonight that the reality of your presence isn't learned academically. It's experienced relationally. You know, I do apologetics and I go to these college campuses, but there's one thing people need to understand. Apologetics will never, never, never win a person to Christ. The power of salvation is exclusively in the gospel. Now, apologetics may tear down questions that people have that prohibit them from moving forward in their relationship with Christ. But the power is the gospel and the gospel alone. And the gospel, the simple, God made man and man forfeited his position. And with no alternative or recourse, man, as a hopeless cause, became the beneficiary of God's amazing grace as God sent his only begotten son to die on a cross and in his death and through his resurrection procured for sinful mankind the right of citizenship and spiritual adoption. If we simply accept by faith what Christ did on our behalf. I am a part of God's family tonight. I have been adopted into God's family. Not because I study, not because of education. Paul said, those things, if that's all I have, are nothing but dirt and foolishness. But what I have, I have received of the Spirit. No man can say Jesus is Lord, but by a revelation of the Holy Spirit. And so, Lord, do not I pray for every person in this auditorium and every individual that is watching on the internet. Holy Spirit, make your presence real. Make your presence known tonight. None of us deserve this gift. We receive it though gladly, understanding that nothing we could do would ever merit such kindness and compassion. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. Lord, I pray for every young adult in this sanctuary tonight that is on the front lines of this spiritual battle. It's more than a battle of ideas. This is really a spiritual conflict. The weapons of our warfare, they're not carnal, but they are mighty through Christ Jesus to the pulling down of strongholds. And I'm asking that God tonight, you would embolden, you would empower, you would anoint every young adult in this room to step forward into the battlefield and see it not just as a battle to be won, but a mission to engage. And I pray that God, the scales and the blinders that cover the eyes of an increasingly secular world would begin to fade away as the gospel is presented. Christ illuminate the darkened heart and use these in this auditorium to do that work. God send them, even as you have sent me. We have all been commissioned, we have all been dispatched to go forward and proclaim the good news of the gospel. Let us obey gladly. And let timidity, fear, apprehension, worry, concern, fall at the feet of Christ's lordship. Let those things be burned up in the presence of the Holy Spirit. There is much land to be possessed. There is much land to be possessed. God is looking for a Joshua. He's searching for a Caleb, a young man and a young lady that will rise up as soldiers of the cross, lifting high the royal banner of Christ, walking forward from victory unto victory, marching in the army of God, taking, taking no quarter and leaving no quarter. Thank you, Lord, for that, the presence of the spirit that we feel tonight and the truth that we glean from your word and the realities of your existence that we find in nature. I thank you for this in Jesus mighty name.
Let's thank the Lord for everything he has done for us. Jesus paid it all, all to him I owe. Sin had left a crimson stain. He washed it white as snow. And then before the throne, I stand incomplete. I will lay my trophies down, all down at Jesus' feet. Jesus paid it all, all to him I owe. Sin had left a crimson stain. He washed it white as snow. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt and raised his life up from the dead. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt and raised my life up from the dead. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt and raised his life up from the dead. Oh, praise the one who paid my debt and raised his life up from. Jesus paid it all, all to him I owe. Sin had left a crimson stain. He washed it. Sin had left a crimson stain; He washed it white as snow." Gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful to you for this beautiful and wonderful time. Once again, thanking you for everything you have done in our lives, Lord. Thank you for speaking to us this evening and helping us to understand the fallacies of the arguments and different things we hear all around us. We thank you, Jesus, for what you have done. We acknowledge, Lord, that you are our Creator, you're the One who made us, and each and every one of us is precious to you, Lord, every human life, everyone. Lord, you value them. We pray, God, that even as we navigate the challenges of the current trends which are happening all around us, we pray for your grace and mercy to navigate all these things so that we will be able to move forward with your grace and with your power. And we will always be ready to give an answer to anyone who may ask us the reason for our hope. We pray that you will guide us, lead us. Thank you for enabling your servant to speak again tonight. Lord, in a short while, as we go back from here to our homes, be with us. Give us traveling mercies. Give us good night sleep tonight, Lord, so that if you're coming to Harrah's tomorrow morning, we'll be able to get up and gather here again to lift up your name high. Keep us all safe under your mighty wings. Strengthen everyone, give everyone physical strength and healing which is needed. We thank you, we praise you. Once again, we thank you, Lord, that you have opened our eyes to know the wonderful things. When the devil has blinded many, we thank you that, Lord, you opened our eyes to see you and understand you. And Lord, we pray that you will give us the grace to continue to stand and lead us and guide us, Lord. We give you honor and glory in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Now may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, love the Father and fellowship of the Holy Spirit, be with us all from now on forever. Amen, amen. God bless you all, you may be seated for a few more minutes.